This program was inspired by two different things. Number one, our senior policy analyst Jeffrey Kovach, who will be moderating this panel. Give him a nice big hand. Three years ago, Jeffrey came to the BGA, oh, well, three years ago, he came with this idea to the BGA about doing a budget snapshot. So this was our third year, this past budget season was our third year putting together budget by budget, department by department snapshots of the budget. First of its kind somewhat by a third party outside the city to put something like this on. It is a digestible piece of information for residents of Chicago and for our aldermen. Our aldermen unfortunately, well, I should say unfortunately, but they, well, we think they don't have enough support when it comes to the budget process in terms of the city council. I think that's fair to say.
We agree.
And so I know for a fact that aldermen throughout the, all 50 aldermen are using these snapshots. They get them in their inbox. I think over 35 of them are subscribed to, or their staffers are subscribed to our newsletter, which is a big deal to us because we constantly get phone calls from staff and aldermen to ask us, you know, what we think about the city budget. So we're very proud of that. We're very proud of Jeffrey for getting that started three years ago because it was a much-needed piece of information. And the second reason, second inspiration behind getting something like this together today was we all saw the last budget process. And, you know, on the outside, maybe people think that was a chaotic process, maybe internally it was a bit of a chaotic process, but to us at the BGA, we saw it as democracy at work. Democracy is messy. We saw the city council rise up and be a legislative branch checking the executive branch, not just being a rubber stamp as we've seen for decades with the city council. So we're very happy to see that. We'd like to see it maybe cleaned up a bit, but it was actually really, we think on our side, it was a great piece of checks and balances within the city of Chicago. So without further ado, we'll introduce our senior policy analyst Jeffrey Kovach, and we'll get started and we'll do some introductions. And then we also have, you should have some of these Q and As. So the last half hour of our program will be collecting these. So if you do write something in the middle of the program, just kind of put it up in the air, we'll grab it and we'll do our best to try to get to as many questions as possible. So, right, you guys starting?
Alrighty, thanks very much. Thanks, Brian. We're picking up alright in the back. Okay, brilliant, thanks very much. Well, good morning, everyone. It's Brian Seddon. My name is Jeffrey Kovach. I'm a senior policy analyst with Better Government Association. We have a good group of alderpeople here today. We sent invites out to some folks who were really very deep in the weeds during the budget process, people who were asking some good questions and doing some hard work, both on the budget as, you know, the budget that sets up the spending, but also on the process of how do we get that. When we did the first of these city council 101s two years ago at the start of Mayor Johnson's term, at the start of this legislative term, we focused on nuptials of legislation, how does ordinance move through city council in a regular fashion. Today, we're going to do something very similar, but for the budget, how do we get from start to finish on one of those. And we have a great panel here, so I want to give each of our alderpersons a chance to introduce themselves. And each of you, if you could, just let us know which ward you're from and roughly which parts of the city it's covered, and also how long you've been on city council since. I know we've got folks from multiple administrations here. You may have to push the button on the mic to turn it on the first time.
That's pretty good.
Alright, great. Why don't we start right here?
Alderman Bill Conway of the 34th Ward. In fact, we should be sitting in my ward right now, but this was gerrymandered out of it. Represent most of the Loop, West Loop, Little Italy, Greektown, and a bit of the South Loop as well. Brief background on me, I am a father of three very small children, ages five, three, and two. My wife is here in the audience someplace. Why she decided to come to a budget process meeting in two-degree weather, I don't know why she did, and I'm thankful you all have as well, and thank you for putting this on as well. And I will say, the one-page sheets the Better Government Association does provide during budget season are extremely helpful. I believe it was said earlier that the budget is digestible. The problem is it's anything but digestible, so having some experts like you all that are able to process it for us, to keep the metaphor going, is very helpful. Beyond that, I teach finance and law at DePaul University, right down the street here at the Loop campus. The finance kids have an exam today, you should pray for them, it's a hard exam. Beyond that, I was an assistant state's attorney and prosecuted public corruption and financial crimes for seven years, and also am still an intelligence officer in the United States Navy. I'm a reservist now. Well, that's a bit of my varied background. My parents will tell you I can't hold down a job, so take it for what it's worth.
Public service.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm alderperson Andre Vasquez of the 40th Ward. 40th Ward covers Andersonville, Lincoln Square, Edgewater, West Ridge, Rogers Park, Bowmanville, a bunch of other areas, Ravenswood Manor as well. I am the co-chair of the Progressive Caucus, vice chair of Latino Caucus, and the chair of the Immigration Committee for the City of Chicago. So, hands pretty full most of the time. Really appreciative to be here. Been in council now five, going on my sixth year. Definitely been invested in trying to get this budget process improving over time and making sure we have a council that's more fully independent. I think those that were kind of watching maybe last term during the budget process, I tend to refer as, refer to it as like a baby driving a car as far as learning the city council, trying to assert its independence. Now we're kind of in the pre-team stage, so let's see how much we can evolve and grow better. So glad to be here. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everybody. I'm alderwoman Nicole Lee from the 11th Ward. That includes, ooh, that's kind of teeny, Chinatown, all of Chinatown for the first time ever, all of Bridgeport, Armour Square, a little bit of Canaryville, and part of McKinley Park. I have, I'm really glad that I followed Andre and not Bill, because that's a lot to live up to. So I'm just gonna tell you a little bit more about myself here. I am not a naval intelligence officer. I love these guys, so we're gonna have a little, I'm gonna bring a little levity to this. I am serving under my second mayor. I was appointed by Lori Lightfoot as the first Asian-American woman on the city council. And, thank you. I'm always glad that people know and applaud for that. Not resulting if we're talking about gerrymandering and everything. Within the remap, we were able to get all of Chinatown into one ward, which makes it our first Asian-majority ward in the entire city. Also something very proud, that we're very proud of as well. On the council, I am the budget vice chair, for whatever that's worth, right? But I also serve as the chair of the Women's Caucus, which I'm very proud to serve, leading that caucus with, I think, the most women that we've had on city council in its history. So, you know, as in the immortal words of Beyonce, who runs the world. Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, what was great about the budget process the first time I went through it was that it was very educational for me. I mean, for a new alderperson wanting to learn more about every single department, I mean, really, the budget hearings are the place to do it. And as I've gone through now, my third budget cycle, I progressively learned a lot more and I have not been as engaged as I was this last time, and I think it was a fight worth fighting, and, you know, I'm really proud to sit with my colleagues here who, throughout that process, we were all working very diligently together to try to get the best deal for Chicago. Not sure we got there, but here's where we are, and happy to be part of this discussion. So thank you.
Good morning. My name is Matthew O'Shea. I serve as alderman of the 19th Ward, far southwest corner of the city. I represent the communities of Beverly, Morgan Park, and Mount Greenwood. I've been in the city council since 2011, serving under three mayors, Emmanuel Lightfoot and now Johnson. First and foremost, Jeffrey, thank you, to you and the BGA for putting this together, and thanks to all of you. I said to somebody a few minutes ago, if there ever was a day to say, yeah, I don't really want to go downtown in this weather for this, you guys are truly believers in this process that we have for coming out, so I appreciate all of you attending. Little background on me, born and raised in the 19th Ward, was always somewhat active in politics and community. Worked for folks like Tom Hines, Jeremiah Joyce, Tom Dart, Mike Sheehan, Ginger Rugai, people who have all served, people that I've always looked up to and mentored me in some way. My past, I actually was a social worker for many years, that's where I get my sensitive In my 14 years now on council, this is, I just took part in my 14th budget, and to be completely candid, that was the most difficult budget process to go through. What you're gonna get today is candor from this panel, because in some way, shape, or form, I worked with all three of my colleagues during this process. It was difficult from the very start. We'll probably get more into the budget tier discussion later on, but moving forward, we need more answers, we need more transparency, we need more collaboration if you can. But honored to be here today with all of you and look forward to spending the morning. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And again, the panel you see before us is all people who were in and out of those rooms doing a lot of the work, looking at a lot of numbers in very, very deep detail during this season and in previous years as well, so we're thrilled to have this crowd. A little context for everybody, you don't need to see it too close up, don't worry, this is just to give you a very broad spectrum. We're talking about process today, and this is the timeline of that process over the past 10 or so years. So you can see where the outliers jump out fairly quickly. So the start of each bar there, the blue ones, the very first start is the mayor's budget address. That is where the mayor goes before council, lays out priorities that are gonna be in the budget, and crucially, it is when council and the public receive the budget books. It's when they actually get the full set of numbers of what is being proposed this year. So that blue bar then is the time between that speech and when budget hearings start. The central bar, the red bar, is when you have budget hearings, so the departments are going before city council to talk through their budgets. And the last chunk of the bar, that yellow section up there, that's after the hearings have ended, but before the final vote is called. It ends at the final vote, so it's how long from hearings to vote, sort of your deliberative process or part of the process, if you will. So this all as a whole, I think, is where public attention tends to focus on the budget. This is where media attention tends to focus on the budget. But I wanted to start off by asking our alders, what does the timeline look for you as members of city council before this period starts? Is there engagement from the administration? Is there involvement from you all before the mayor's address? Or is that pretty much the starting gun for you as well each year? We can start at the other end, just to keep things clear.
Okay. So, what I would say, this year, I was approached back in June by Sidney Holman, some of you might remember, who was the director of Intergovernmental Affairs for the mayor. Sidney was a wonderful person, really enjoyed working with her. Sidney asked me, and some others, if I would be a part of a group of aldermen representing different caucuses, laying the groundwork during the summer months before the fall presentation of the mayor's budget. The media dubbed us the Budget Tears. I didn't sign up for that name, but that's neither here nor there. Now, you're probably wondering, what caucus is O'Shea in 19 in? I'm really not in a caucus, I'm not in a caucus, but I was, when Sidney approached me, she said, we're just looking for people who are pragmatic, who are willing to put the time in. And I said, absolutely. And I said, Sidney, I just want to be clear, I don't know where this budget's gonna go, so just me participating in this process doesn't mean I could end up being a yes phone. So I myself took part in four Budget Tier meetings, which I can only describe as being an utter waste of time. And we'll probably get more into this later. When we talk about progressive revenue and how we need help from the state of Illinois, three of those four meetings I took part in, I said, where are we at with the State House? Where are we at with Governor Pritzker? Oh, we're working on this, we're communicating. There was no communication. There was no sit-downs with Governor Pritzker, there was no sit-downs with President Harmon. I can't speak for Speaker Welsh, but I want to make it clear to everybody that there was not a lot of prep work done for this difficult budget process. And then at some point, and I believe it was September when it was announced as what the number was, was it around Labor Day?
Yeah.
You know, that's when things really heated up. It's incumbent on us as members of the city council that we're talking to each other and frankly, leaning on organizations like the BGA for information, because, you know, Bill's got a background in finance, I don't. My wife's got the checkbook at home. So I don't want anybody to leave here today thinking that I am a finance wizard. But what I will do, and what my colleagues here on the panel will do, is we'll put the time in to sit down with people that understand this process, to sit down, to educate us, to help us, to guide us, to offer possible solutions. There were many of us willing to spend the time on that. We were talking to various organizations, the Civic Commission, Civic Federation, BGA, organizations within our own community. So if work was done, it was incumbent on us to do it. I wouldn't say there was a lot of prep work done from the administration.
Alderwoman Lee, period before the budget speech, before the mayor's address.
Period before the, so I was one of the Budget Tears as well. I was invited to the meetings, and I would say, my experience of it was pretty similar. I didn't feel like they were very substantive in nature, especially ultimately to what we saw get published and announced in terms of what the mayor's budget plans were. I was encouraged by the fact that it was being convened earlier in the process, but not necessarily once we got into it. It just, you know, frankly, it felt more like a box-sticking exercise, unfortunately. And I think that there were other things going on in the background. Sidney, who was initially the person that recruited us to be part of it, you know, she left, she left the mayor's office and there was some upheavals going on there. So, you know, none of that helps in a difficult budget year, and we, you know, we knew going into it, you know, the deficit that we were facing. And as Matt said, I think we were, we were all more than willing to put in the work. You know, I think that this is a council now who, we want to be engaged, we want there to be transparency, we want to be able to answer for the things that we're voting on. And that period in between, you know, we talked about, you know, some potential ideas to generate revenue, that we weren't hearing a whole lot about what was coming out of the administration either. There was a whole committee, a subcommittee on revenue that we really, we hadn't heard anything about. We got a Google form asking us what our ideas were. And it's just so interesting that, you know, engagement is one thing, you know, talk to us about what some of your ideas are, alderpeople, like, we certainly have some, but why are we the only ones that seemingly are coming up with the ideas? And we don't have the capacity, from a resource perspective, to follow through or to do the due diligence on a lot of these ideas. So I think, you know, if this process is gonna get better, it's gonna take authentic collaboration, not just, you know, for show.
Well, let me go ahead and ask, because the other two gave their answers, then just to sort of dovetail off of that. Do we think something like this is likely to happen again? And if so, what do you need from the administration to make it a little more useful than it was this time around?
I guess for me, looking at it, we need a lot more serious engagement. So I think a lot of the work that I've done now in the 56th year really takes into account how serious budgets are, right? We've got folks that are paying their taxes, and we have to show a return on that investment, right? We've got services we provide, we have to make sure we come off responsible, that people know we're being judicious with what we're doing with their tax dollars. And so what I would do every year prior to this one, including this one actually, would be go to the mayor and actually have a list of what are the ideas we have for revenue, what are the things that we feel are needs coming out of a budget. And so I recall meeting with Mayor Lightfoot and being in a meeting for about 45 minutes to go through each single item. And to add further context, Jeffrey was at a couple of them, because he was our director of policy at the time. So during our second year in office, we actually worked to craft a budget from the city council side. As far as the resources we don't have, this is very real, we had to do it with a bunch of interns, and actually pull numbers out of PDFs, put them in the spreadsheets, and try to do the math to actually present what a budget would look like. So it was the first time the city council had introduced it in decades. So coming into this council, or under this term, under, with Mayor Johnson, we learned a little something before this budget process. We watched it last year, or the year before that, I should say. And they made decisions that let me know that they weren't being necessarily responsible. We had a Consumer Price Index property tax increase that Mayor Lightfoot had, you know, implemented prior to that, that actually made sense, right? You have an increase in your property tax in a way that is measured, that is predictable, that doesn't lead to these wild swings of not doing a property tax and then trying to make up for it two years later. I remember talking to folks like Jason Lee and saying, we need to keep that CPI index, because we're gonna continue to see these deficits grow. His answer to me was, well, the mayor promised not to raise property taxes. To which, here's a hint for everyone, if you have anyone campaigning on not increasing taxes, don't believe them. They don't mean it. They're doing whatever they can to get to the seat. So the context of how this played out this time was talking to Mayor Johnson all of 15 minutes with any ideas, and exactly what our colleagues are saying, not the level of engagement, not the serious needed, not when people are all watching to make sure we're doing it properly. So we kind of sat here waiting for them to give us any level of answer, and they did the budget address two weeks late, later than any other mayor had done prior. So we need a lot more seriousness, we need the kind of engagement that's year-round, and not just waiting the last two months of the year, hoping we get something right.
Yeah, one, to dovetail with a lot of that, one thing that, one unfortunate thing I can tell you all is that the, to steal your line, the do-your-homework caucus within city council is frighteningly small. And the one thing I can tell you, maybe it's 15, 20 maybe, I can promise you that all four of these folks are on that. So because of that, it, and there's a couple reasons for that. One of them is we have some lazy colleagues. Another one is, they know how they're gonna vote, so they're not gonna, you know, so they don't really, you know, they don't really engage on it. So you have this kind of group of folks that are trying to put the work in and be creative and see how we can come to something that is good for the taxpayers and is gonna be good for the city, good for the city long-term. But as part of that, as Alderman Vasquez said, we certainly need to be starting this process earlier. I mean, the graph kind of spoke for itself on that regard. And part of the reason for that is, you know, at this point, we were, you know, you get a thousand pages and it's just sort of a list of line items of, you know, you say we should cut the law department, well, you see deputy general counsel level two, and there's eight of those. Like, what, how many of those do you need? Four, five, six? How many do you need? So it's difficult for us as a legislative branch of government to provide that oversight, especially even with wonderful help from the BGA, but it's hard to do that without getting a full collaborative discussion with the executive branch. One thing I will say though is that we in council certainly need to have our own access to data. So we're seeing this a lot earlier, we're not kind of getting it dropped on us, you know, whenever the mayor chooses to make his budget address. And I'm gonna commend Alderman Vasquez for that, because he's really been leading the effort to ensure that we in city council will be getting data earlier and throughout the year. And, you know, hopefully that will at least make us better educated in the process and that we can be negotiating with the administration equal footing.
And we're gonna talk a little bit about some of that specific, some of those specific changes that did get made. Before we get to that though, I do want to ask, sort of in this first period after the mayor's given his speech, you all have COFA, there's the Council Office of Financial Analysis, there's groups like ourselves, Civic Federation, others that are out there sort of doing analyses, all in that very narrow window of days, that's that blue bar up there, usually somewhere between three to six days, between the budget data becoming public and hearings started. Does the sort of analytical ecosystem that we have right now really provide what's needed in that? Or are there types of analyses that are, gaps that need to be filled before those hearings start? And to tee it up a tiny bit, is there value in perhaps making that blue bar a little whiter, having a longer gap of time between the numbers becoming available and those budget hearings with the departments in front of you starting off? Anybody? Go ahead.
A million percent, yes.
Don't feel like you have to go one, two, three, four.
Sure, sure. So I think for the last two years, maybe three, from between the budget address and getting some level of numbers, our office would then schedule meetings with all of the alders and bring in the Civic Federation, BGA, the Center for Tax and Budget Accountability, because it's been incredibly helpful to have that kind of independent analyses on that data. So we tried to do that this year, and we scheduled it about a week after the numbers dropped. And to a T, every single group was like, we've had all but a week to look through these numbers. So we can give you general ideas and things to look for, but it's gonna take us a little bit longer to look at. So I think if you, if you look at it cynically in Chicago, I think sometimes you've gotta look at things cynically, it's kind of intentional, right? You do the budget address, you start moving quickly, so there isn't that level of analyses, then you get to the hearings, which are, you know, to be honest, a little bit of theater, and then hopefully get enough votes. So I think we definitely need more time. We are working to make sure COFA is strengthened in the way New York's independent budget office is, so that we can get that kind of information and be better at this year-over-year.
Anybody else on that?
Yeah, I'll agree with that 100% too. I think we need, we need more engagement throughout the year on this. To Bill's point, not everybody necessarily wants to engage as much as some of us do. I would contend that all of us need to do more. Whatever you're doing currently, you gotta do more, because it's not enough. It's not enough on behalf of our constituents and definitely not enough on behalf of the people of the city of Chicago, that we need to be paying more attention to this. Like I said earlier, the first budget cycle was great for me, because I learned a lot, but I've learned a hell of a lot since then too. And when you get, when you get the proposal and the documents, you know, a week before, less than a week before the hearings are supposed to start, how are you supposed to digest all of that? You get a telephone book, you get a few talking points, and you don't really have a sense of like, what is it that we're trying to accomplish with this budget? Like, to what end are we investing billions of dollars? And what did we do to ensure that, you know, it's the highest best use of taxpayer dollars at the end of the day? And, you know, those are the questions that I was looking to get answered, and I agree to 100% on the CPI, you know. I was never against any sort of tax increase, I maintained, I just needed to know that whatever we were asking for in an increased tax levy was justified. It's pretty simple. We need to be able to answer that question for everybody and anybody that's interested in knowing it, that is our responsibility. So I think increased, increased engagement, and again, not just, let me throw some numbers at you, but like, let's have a meaningful conversation about how we don't end up with this sort of situation, with sort of the red bar and the yellow, that we do our work on the front end, so that that piece of it, by the time we get there, is about us just coming together to finalize some things. We got a tough year coming ahead of us, and it made even tougher since this last one.
Yeah, and so I would agree with a lot of that, and say that we certainly need more collaboration between city council and the executive branch of government as a whole. But unfortunately, I think that we are unlikely to get it. And the reason for that is because just of a, all public things pretty much, but a, there is a significant lack of trust between city council and the mayor's office. And I don't want to speak for my, for my colleagues' perspective, I don't think I'm saying, I don't think I'm really, I don't think I'm going, but you know, you had some just wild things, like the, the mayor saying, oh, I'm just gonna put forth a $300 million property tax increase just to see like how that lands, it wasn't even a real proposal. Or 41 of us saying, please don't fire Pedro Martinez instead of head of CPI, I guess until the court stepped in. 35 of us, please don't get rid of ShotSpotter, he went and did it anyway. You know, not to mention, we could go further back in terms of try to build a migrant shelter on a toxic waste dump without talking to the local alderperson. So, and now it's somehow demanding loyalty oaths. So it is a system with a lack of trust and it's not getting better. But unfortunately, it is something that is needed if we're gonna work our way through the next budget, and I really hope that on a lot of this, the mayor's willing to change course. And I will say, knowing, knowing the colleagues up here, we were four of the people that were like, look, we want to get to yes on this, please work with us. We didn't sign, we kind of had 15 of our colleagues that signed a bunch of letters saying, cut the budget by $3 billion, we're not gonna tell you how. We weren't on those letters. We were very much trying to find, find solutions here that just, that just didn't come. So that's something that's gonna cause some issues going forward, I think.
Well, and in terms of interfacing with the administration, that's actually a great segue, because the part I wanted to ask about next, I think, is the part where the public is the most tuned in and where there's the most opportunity for us to tune in, is in those budget hearings. So for folks who have not attended, that's where the city departments come before city council, lay out their departmental budget. These older folks get a chance to ask questions, usually 10 minutes per, or you can get around two if you ask for it. And if there's time, sometimes there'll be five or six departments scheduled for a single day, so there is not always time. So very broadly for our panel here, as an alderperson in those departmental hearings, what's working for you? What are you getting out of those that is useful when you're thinking through your budget vote? What's not? And what would be the most value for you? What could be added to those? What do you need from those that you're not getting currently?
I'm gonna take a shot at this, because I sat at the front of the room for a lot of it.
You did, yes, Madam Vice Chair.
Yeah, I.
Teacher's pet.
That's okay, you guys enjoyed it there, right? Come on. As someone who was there for, I would say 99% of all of the hearings, something that was markedly different for me from the, different from the first two was, was the level of engagement. I mean, I was, I was struck by, towards the end especially, how few of my colleagues came out. came out. You know, police and fire, streets and sand, CDA, those are usually like a high number of alders there. And I think that part of that was, was really indicative of what this process was like. I mean, people didn't feel like it was a good use of their time to come because it wasn't going to make a difference. I mean, we went from 300 to what, where did we go? 150? And then?
68.
Six, six.
Then zero.
And then zero. So, you know, there really wasn't a course that we could sort of track to. Yes, you can have the conversation with the commissioners, ask specific questions about line items. It's also generally a good time for alders to really ask for specific things regarding their wards, too. Again, interesting that we didn't have as much of that this time around. I do think that it's important because the departments have to really stand for what's happening in their departments and the headcount and the programs that they're, that they're budgeting for. I think what many of us were looking for were just sort of like, any indication that there was any really meaningful discussion about what efficiencies look like. And to be told that, you know, a 3% haircut was all anybody could afford across the board. I didn't buy it. I think many of us didn't at the end of the day. But that, that budget hearing environment, I think, is a little bit, it's a little bit difficult to, department by department, get to the nitty-gritty of like how, how things could work more efficiently. Do we need to be doing the things that we're doing? Do we need that many people, you know, answering the phones or responding to whatever it is? So I think that there's an opportunity to, I think, also rethink the, the structure of the budget hearings themselves. I think if we had a better sense of what we were trying to accomplish with the budget besides not raising a tax levy ultimately and, and not cutting jobs, look, nobody wants to do that. But we also have a responsibility to make the hard decisions. And if we don't have the information that we need to make those decisions, then, you know, if all I'm left with was yes or no to this, then, you know, I voted no on the
So as I stated earlier, I've been a part of 14 budgets. Budget hearings, you know, there's departments that you want that commissioner in front of you, and you want to look them in the eye, and you want to ask them basic questions, you want to get down into the weeds. And then there's other commissioners that frankly, if we're doing our job, the other 11 half-months out of the year, you know these answers. If you're, if you're doing your job and you're paying attention, you don't need to wait the budget hearing to find out how many police officers we have staffed, how many, how many salt spreaders do we have ready for the streets and sand when snow comes? But what was frustrating to me is if the Transportation Department was up at 9:00 in the morning, we'll say, and four of us and six or seven others were there, 12 of the 50 aldermen were there when this important department that has an $80 million budget is up, and 12 people are there to start. Well, the alderman that shows up at 11:30 comes in and asks the same question that Vazquez asked two hours earlier. You watch, you guys watch TV shows, ask and answer, the lawyers like to say. We have that repetitively, where if people showed up for work, even if you don't even do your homework, just show up and have, you know, a basic litany of questions you want answers to, as opposed to some of the theatrics that go on. I was not at 99% of the hearings, I was probably at 80% of the hearings, because frankly, we have jobs to do in our communities. And there's some departments, I'm like, I'm good with their budget, but I just, there's two things I want to say here. If every department is asked to take a 3% haircut, now I look out in this room, you guys are running households, some of you have children, you're paying bills, you're paying a mortgage, you're paying utility bills, and today the gas meter is really You take a 3% haircut when you have to, in lean years, maybe there's a sickness in the house, maybe someone's between jobs, maybe you're paying a tuition. So maybe you don't buy that car that you really need, maybe you continue to drive the beater for a couple more years. You take haircuts, you make difficult decisions. There's departments that we could have cut a hell of a lot more than 3%, ladies and gentlemen. And then there's departments that frankly, we need to invest more in. And the last thing I want to mention is what was extremely frustrating to me through this process was that there were people that weren't engaged, that in the end, they were bought off.
Is that something you'd like to elaborate more on? Feel free.
Make news, man, make news.
I'm not asking you to name names. Some old people might at some point.
It's a $17 billion budget. It's incumbent on us as the elected representatives of 50,000-plus people in our respective wards to do our homework and to make a decision representing all of you. Sometimes they're unpopular decisions, and I'll be very candid. At the end of the day, if we had made efficiencies, if we had made cuts, if we had gone the extra mile, I could have looked my constituents in the eye and said, we've done this, we've done this, we've done this. Unfortunately, we're still not there. I'm going to support a property tax increase. I would have got there because I know structurally what we have ahead of us. And if you folks think this budget we're talking about here was a mess, where do you see next year?
Yeah, and we're going to talk about 2025 specifically and what's coming, and just the same. I do think, the next question I had touches on some of what you were saying right there about how people get to that yes, which is that final part of the bar, so after hearings have ended, before we get things called for a vote. When you look at historically, the timeframe has changed there, right? In the manual years, a vote got called usually four or five days after hearings were over, and some of those were more contested than others, but, you know, they always got to yes pretty quickly. That timeframe gets a little longer under Lightfoot. And then Johnson, last year, scheduled it to be the longest we'd ever had, the longest stretch between hearings and a final vote. This year, and we'll talk more about what happened this year, things got a little wonky because there was a sort of pause in hearings and that got stretched out, so there's a slightly shorter time to the final vote. But what's that like for the alderpeople? Because this is when the hearings are over, the cameras are off, but there's still the process of getting to 26 plus. What's that look like for you? What is that week or more that it takes to get to a final budget vote being called? What's happening in your offices at that point?
Sure, yeah, I mean, so I think it's, I'm a little biased, but I think things have changed over time as far as public engagement. And a lot of it is due to social media and being able to like, get every tweet of what somebody said in the hearing, or what the mayor may have said in a press conference in a way that adds more scrutiny to the folks doing this job up here. And so I think hearings in the past probably were built the same, right? Your departments had 10 minutes to run the clock and keep it moving. And I think in the past, when you're talking under a manual, you would have all those conversations done fairly quickly. Nobody's eyes were on it to the same level that they are now. So those deals were pretty much taken care of behind closed doors. It's why you see the rubber stamp votes of like 49 to 1, 50 to 0 when it comes to these buttons. So I do think it's healthier, what we're seeing now, as uncomfortable it is, as it is to watch. So I think, you know, we did our part asking questions, you try to get through the chair answers, right? So you're asking more in-depth questions of these departments, and then you're waiting for them to give you these answers. So you're kind of sitting still, waiting for some of the data. And so it becomes much harder to land on a yes or a no vote. It's even worse, or more challenging, I should say, when everyone's watching. Sorry, go ahead.
Speak to those just a tiny bit. For folks who aren't familiar, when he says through the chair, that's at these hearings if an alderperson asks a question that the commissioner or the staff doesn't necessarily have an answer for right away. It's usually something that's more data-heavy, or they have to do a little research. They'll say, we'll get that to you through the chair, which means the chair of the budget committee is going to work with that department, get the answer, email it out. Talk to us about how quickly that's happening, how long before your final vote that that is reaching you.
Thank you.
And again, as with all of these, what can be done to improve that, to make it a little easier?
Yeah, so those of you, I mean, everyone who works here, right? Imagine you're at an interview with your boss and you got 10 minutes. You know how to run the clock, right? And they're asking for more information, you're saying, yeah, yeah, absolutely get that to you, right? There are definitely multiple instances where we don't get those answers until after the budget's already been voted on, right? There were, one of our colleagues, Alderman Brennan Riley, actually sent a letter saying, these are the questions we haven't had answered. There were a number of us who would kind of caucus together, I would say, to talk through the budget. I like to call us the sensibles, for lack of a better term, where we would have a list of questions that were not getting answered. So if you think about the fact that you're sitting there waiting for answers, meanwhile the administration is trying to figure out every possible way to get your vote, you start understanding the dynamics are different. Like, my first couple of years, you'd hear the public go, how dare you vote for Lightfoot's budget? This is her budget, if you vote for it, then you're not a progressive, or all these other things, right? You start realizing it's actually not a head-to-head matchup. The City Council member has one vote, and mayor has to find 26 out of 50. So all they have to do is keep making adjustments to the budget to get to that 26. So what my colleague Alderman O'Shea mentioned, if someone wants a park in their ward, for example, hey, we'll, we'll work on that park for you. They don't even make strong commitments as to what they're going to do, they just signal that maybe they'll do a thing, but we need to get that vote. And so because people have this, I believe outdated idea of the power a mayor has when they've actually gotten weaker over terms, they go, well, I don't want to get on the mayor's bad side, so how can we figure out how to get to yes? And so I think a lot of that's going to continue to wear down. Why this took so long this time is people weren't falling for it. People weren't saying, okay, I'm going to get to yes because we need to. There's also a real responsibility of what getting to right looks like. So the mayor presents a $300 million property tax, we go, are you nuts? The whole council says we're not doing it. They, because they didn't have a way of understanding negotiation, undercut themselves by half without even having a full dialogue with us of what's possible. Then when they didn't have the votes, they undercut themselves again to 68. Then in order to get the last couple of votes, went back down to 0, right? And in that process, they lost some of us. Some of us were saying, you know what? You need some revenue because if you don't do it this year, next year's hole is going to be that much bigger without the revenue to pay for it. And so that's kind of in the weeds of how the process was looking. And you have somebody who doesn't understand how to negotiate, how to actually stop viewing things as being on the other side of a table and being on the same side, working on a budget, you're not going to get to yes sooner. And I do think this year coming up is going to be that much worse. It would have been worse under Harris presidency, it's going to be exponentially worse under a Trump one.
Yeah, and to piggyback on that, you know, it was to Alderman Vazquez's point, you know, essentially after we voted down the property tax increase, the mayor came out very publicly and said, I've done my part. I've put out a, I have put out a balanced budget, it is up to City Council to take it from there. And that was when we had groups like, that would caucus trying to see what we can, what we can do here. And what you see in that, in that collaborative process, we all bring some different expertise to the table, we all, we all have, you know, different areas we represent. I myself, I used to be a banker, so I know a lot about finance. I was a state senator, I know about a lot about the law. A lot of other things I don't know a whole lot about, and I have colleagues that do, thankfully. So we are working together to try and find out, hey, where are the real problems in this budget? How can we approve it? You know, what is kind of not making, what's not passing the sense check? So when the, what'd you say, the sensibles? When the sense, I think, I thought my kids play with Beanie Babies, now maybe they play with sensibles and that, it's not a term I'm familiar with. But I guess when the sensibles would get together, that is kind of the type of thing, we would lean on each other's expertise and try and find, you know, find what can we do to really make this, this budget more palatable for our colleagues, as well as something that is in the long-term benefit of the, of the city's future.
I was digging through my phone, not because I was being rude, but I wanted to just elucidate a point about the through-the-chair responses. On December 12th, and the budget was passed on December 16th, I think.
Yep.
On December 12th, we got an email from the Committee on Budget with 83 attachments. 83 responses, all at one time. There, I mean, there were a lot of questions that were asked, but if we can't get answers in a timely fashion, we don't, we're not armed with the information that we've literally asked for in order to help make a decision.
Weeks earlier.
And to be clear, for you, the public, those are public records, those through-the-chairs. You can theoretically FOIA those and go through them. There will be a minimum of a five-day wait, which they'll almost certainly extend to a 10-day wait. So a friendly alderperson were to leak those, to give those, it's not a leak, it's public information, but unless a friendly alderperson were to hand that to you, you, the public, would have had no way to see those before the budget vote was done in a moment. So just to put that on the timeframe.
Happy to email them.
Yeah, and the inquiries were made more than a month earlier. I mean, these were made beginning Thursday, November 7.
Particularly because we had about half our budget hearings fairly early, and then there was a pause while the tax thing got taken, talked through. That's, I think, actually a great segue to look at this in just a slightly different form. This is just, it's the same data, it's just stacking it, so you can see how it all adds up. 2025, an outlier year in a couple of ways, right? This was, this was a different budget season from other ones. So for the alderpeople, can you tell us a little bit about what happened to make that process so different? And more looking forward, are we seeing structural changes either in the city's finances or in the legislative process, or both, that are really going to shift how Chicago budget seasons look going forward? Or do we think this was to some extent a one-off?
I could tee it up a little bit, I'm going to tee it up for you. Like, beautiful for you. So one thing that made this so long is the fact that we voted down the property tax increase in the middle of the budget. And as a result of that, that really left the departments sort of not sure what to do next, and then, I don't know if it was the administration or the budget chair, that we just didn't have hearings for like 10 days in the middle of this, which, which caused that, you know, which caused a lot of the, the red bar being longer. But going forward, and I'll kick it over to Alderman Vazquez, because he's, because we are going to be needing to get data throughout, throughout the year to do this, as I mentioned. And he's really been a leader in making sure that happens. I can't tee it up that far.
To get a tiny bit more into that, since you mentioned it before, we did see in the middle of budget season, a single revenue piece, the property tax levy, called for a vote, it came to the floor of City Council, there was a vote, it was 0 to 50, all the elders voted no on it. That's very unusual, isn't it, for one piece of a budget to be called?
It was the most shocking thing I've ever seen in my life.
Talk to us about that, how that happened.
I would only say that there were some of my colleagues that are so loyal to the mayor, I thought they would sooner jump out the window than show up to that vote. And the fact that they all showed up and it was 50 to 0 was shocking. They thought about it.
So walk us through, especially Madam Vice Chair, walk us through how the decision to have that called for a vote happened. I mean, that's, that is really unusual in Chicago politics.
It was really unusual. I didn't call for the vote.
No, I didn't mean to put you off.
No, 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 it's okay. I think the, the fact that it was called for a vote and there was so much attention to, just, I mean, it was just so outrageous and egregious of an ask after he made a promise not to raise property taxes, that I think that there was no way, clearly with the vote, that any of my colleagues could, could not oppose that $300 million property tax levy. And I think when that happened, that, that really did draw everybody from, for a loop. And that, that, it was a compounding problem because the, the hearings were set back, were delayed two weeks. So we had, excuse me, very early on, probably, I want to say around June or July, gotten a calendar from, from the budget, from the budget chair, yeah, in June. So we build our schedules off of the, the budget hearings and council meetings and, you know, this, the two-week delay was going to take us into Thanksgiving, and sorry, many of us planned vacations around that. And that was going to, that was going to make things very difficult. So the, the chair had to make some adjustments to the schedule to try to accommodate people's schedules. And frankly, from an operational perspective, too, all of, it's not just alderpeople, it's all of the city workers who are there to help us with the meetings at City Council, City Council Division Police, City Council Division Staff, as well as 2FM, all of the people that are required to run these meetings, whether or not they had plans already, and then all of the overtime that was spent. So this was a very expensive budget process for us. It absolutely was. And it's, it's certainly not something I think that we should try to, to repeat again if we can help it. But I think that's all going to depend on that blue bar being extended.
Yeah, I would say this, largely unpopular ideas create unorthodox coalitions. So we had.
I hope you won that.
Yeah, yeah. We had, we had different groups of alders, right? Some who were like, cut this thing to the bone, how dare you, the budget's increased. We have others who were like, looking at this thing going, we need, to Alderman Lee's point, we need to justify what these solutions even are when we're presenting them. And so when you're saying $300 million property tax without any background and any building up to that case, you're going to have that problem. Then you have the public going, are you nuts? Then you're going to do $300 million property tax. So it led to colleagues who may not agree on a lot of things, fully agreeing on this. And so to walk you through some of the process, any three alders can call for a special meeting, right? So they force a meeting to happen and three alders are to sign on. So let's just say three folks reached out to a whole number of other folks and got so many people on board to do a special meeting. Then the administration, as most administrations would do, will try to make sure you don't have quorum for attendance for that meeting. That ain't going to happen when the public is going, oh, you're not going to show up to this meeting about the $300 million property tax? You like your job, right? Do you want to keep it? Right? So you're, that kind of momentum lets you know who really is the boss in the city of Chicago, it's the taxpayers. So you then get everyone showing up. Now, I'll say this about the yellow part, right? A thing that occurred because that special meeting happened is all of a sudden the administration goes, hey, guys, let's have a meeting to talk through revenue ideas and let's figure out where we can find efficiencies together. So the thing that the budget tiers should have been scheduled to do, which, you know, to their point, wasn't happening, suddenly began once we forced a vote on a special meet on this property tax increase, right? So that, that's what kind of elongated the process as well. I'll say this, in 2020, part of my guest vote was a deal cut with Lori Lightfoot, Mayor Lightfoot at that point, to say, we need a year-long working group to actually work through this budget. Because what happens is, as a mayor, you have a team that works all year round on solutions, and then us alders, you know, the pothole tree trim people, we get two months to try to figure out solutions as well. And you create a tension there. Because the mayor says, hey, this is fully baked, we're ready to roll. The alders who aren't largely policymakers or legislators in that fashion, then present ideas that a mayor views as half-cooked. And they go, we can't really do anything with this. That creates an automatic tension between both branches of government in a way that doesn't help you get to yeses. So I pitched this to Mayor Lightfoot, Mayor Lightfoot said, yes, let's do that. I voted yes on it. And then she reneged on that deal. So we never had, I know, shocker. So then we never had that working group. So what we did this year, our office and part of negotiation for my vote, was to create that year-long budget process. I want mid-year reportings, which are going to happen now, less mid-year, more September, but we're going to have the, the numbers earlier.
We'll have it in a minute.
Yeah, and quarterly reporting as well. We're trying to get that conversation happen much earlier, so when you have your through-the-chair questions, you're getting them way in advance of the budget vote. And so I think by changing some of that process, we can get to better results. And we were able to negotiate it and still land on a no vote. Because at the end of the day, they still kept moving a goalpost and changing in ways that we couldn't support.
And one of the things, you know, you're talking about doing all of that conversation in a very, very short period, and some of that did happen in the public view. So there was some talk about revenues and what eventually replaced the property tax was a series of other tax increases, cloud services, streaming services, things like that. But what we heard during a lot of those budget hearings was the word Springfield, right? We can't do that without Springfield, we need Springfield for that. So talk to us a little bit about some of the revenues the city could pursue or does pursue that would require changes to state law. And more importantly, talk to us about what that outreach to the legislature looks like. Is there a lobbying strategy coming from the, you're giving, you're giving the answer away already. Is there a lobbying strategy?
Put a quarter in him.
Is there a lobbying strategy coming from the mayor's office? Or is there anything council is pursuing independently as a body, through your caucuses, through your own relationships with legislatures, legislators who overlap with you? Walk us through a little bit about what that looks like.
I mean, I'll, I'll start with that. Much of the progressive revenue that we could be talking about, that we should be talking about, we can't do as a city council. We need our colleagues in Springfield. We need Governor Pritzker. And it's now well documented, but I mentioned this briefly in the opening, during these budget tier meetings, I would ask, and this is the leadership, this is the comptroller, the budget director, the chief financial officer, and six, eight, nine aldermen, I would ask point blank, where are we at with Springfield? And when I say Springfield, where are we at with communication with Governor Pritzker, with President Harmon, with Speaker Welch? And I would get anecdotal, yeah, we're in communication. And at one point, I remember I asked for the veto session, which is in November, is the mayor going to go down for the veto session? And I was told by the budget director, yes, 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 he is. And I said, we should make sure that his chief of staff, CPZ, who's a former state senator, should accompany him because in theory, she would have relationships with many in the legislature. When the veto session happened, can I get a show of hands of how many people think the mayor and CPZ went down to Springfield? It, it didn't happen. And some of us saw a few weeks ago where, out of frustration, I can only imagine it was frustration, Governor Pritzker in a press conference stated that he's only had five or so conversations with the mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, he's the governor, he's the mayor of the third-largest city in America that has many, many issues, and they've had five conversations. None of them about progressive revenue. One of them was about a new football stadium.
Stole the day.
So here we are, it's, it's February 18th. We're a quarter of the way to the next budget vote, essentially. The mayor needs to get in a car, get on a plane, and get down to Springfield and have a one-on-one, a heart-to-heart, a clearing of the air of, we don't agree on a lot, but we got to work together. It still hasn't happened. But the mayor gets to say at press conferences, we need billions of dollars from the state. We need, we need progressive revenue from the state. We need hemp, we need video gaming, we need whatever. If you don't go down there and sit down face-to-face, have some dialogue, it's not going to happen.
And for those who pay attention to these calendars, we have a budget address down in Springfield tomorrow. So, you know, the window for this year's budget is very nearly closed. I know we're coming up on Q and A, we'll do that in just a second, but one last topic I want to have our alders go over. Alderman Vasquez and all of you, to one degree or another, were involved in a package of changes, legislative changes that got introduced through the city's management ordinance that actually did alter some of the nuts and bolts of how the budget process works and what the Office of Budget Management has to provide in terms of data, in terms of information for city council. Talk to us about what was in that package, what prompted its introduction. I think we've, to a great extent, covered, but anything you want to add on that? Because that is the first time in a long time, we've seen city councils significantly changing the mechanics of how the budget timeline works, is it not?
Yes. So you can imagine, again, some people want parks, some people want funds for projects in their ward.
Alderman Vasquez got a very nice new park in his ward, I think, two years ago.
That was before the negotiations. But like, when we think about the asks, my sole, sole ask was, let's fix the budget process. Like, that's a very easy deal to cut, to get to a yes vote. And so we introduced an ordinance into the management, budget committee to get the conversation going. But I knew that the actual negotiation was about the budget vote. So it allowed me to kind of leverage both and say, hey, you know that piece of paper we just introduced? Those are the things we want. So let's figure out what we can do as far as this budget that might help me get to yes. And so it did two things. It allowed us to add more budget to the council office of financial analysis, or COFA, so they could in effect start growing into like this independent budget body. We found out that, for a number of reasons. So one, we want to strengthen them to become more of that body. But we also wanted to mandate certain reports in hearings. So it led to mid-year reports that we would get by July 30th. So part of it would be, you tell us this budget that we just passed is going to yield this amount of money. So how can we check what the actual numbers are? Let's get that mid-year, right? Let's figure out all these grants that are happening. What grants are we receiving? What are we reaching out? What are we not getting again? To make sure we're reporting on that. A workforce analysis on each department, right? You say you need this much headcount, we gave you this much headcount, are you hiring up to that? Are you not hiring? Is it necessary? A fund transfer report. So they, we vote on certain numbers in the departments, right? But they get to fudge and move the numbers between line items once they're in the department. We want to report what that looks like. An analysis of the bonds, of third-party contracts, of special events, the cost of that. So something that, I'm going to say this part, we talk about finding efficiencies. You've got the two largest departments in the city of Chicago are the Chicago Police Department and the Chicago Department of Transportation. Both huge, huge departments. The difference is, Department of Transportation largely funded by the federal government in grants. CPD largely funded by your tax dollars. It takes up 40% of your corporate tax dollars. So something that I've heard multiple times in our closed conversations, but not enough publicly, is that that budget is too big. You're talking $2 billion to $3 billion. You want to save some money, you look at the biggest department, you lift the hood and figure out where to save money there. So we want to keep digging there and get reporting on that as well. So by doing those things, then having a hearing in September, we get way in advance of the budget address in a way that allows us to be better. And we also, the other thing we ask for is fiscal impact statements. So being able to ask COFA, hey, my colleague just introduced this ordinance, what impact does that have on the budget? Before we vote on this thing, we should know, is it adding, is it taking away? So we gave ourselves levers, but I think it's going to take some time for us to fully utilize them. But yeah, that's what ultimately I negotiated for. I was going to get to yes on that. And then they decided to take $40,000, $40 million that they were going to include as property tax, but to bring that down, decided not to pay off another debt. And so I was like, well, that's just irresponsible, so I got to know there. But I believe that through this process and then getting the alders to more engage with it, we get much better at asking the questions, and then they have to answer the questions, or else that yellow bar is going to look a lot longer because they're not going to get the yes votes they're trying to get.
Yeah. And we also fought for additional staff for COFA as well, because the, COFA has a staff of two. It's completely insufficient for what, what we need. In fact, it probably needs to be more like eight or 10, but we took two because that was a 100% increase in their staffing levels. Look, just to dovetail off of what Andre was just saying, you know, I had a, we have all kinds of difficult conversations. In the middle of the, the budget conversation, I was with the community group, and I had made a commitment not to vote on, on any budget that included a liquor tax increase. I mean, I made that commitment to the business owners in my community with all of the things that they'd already been hit with. It was really something that they felt strongly, that they, they couldn't take just one more thing. So I made that commitment. The next question out of someone else's mouth was, well, will you make the same commitment to not vote on a budget that takes one penny away from the police department? And I said, I know what you want me to say, but I can't make that kind of commitment to you because I don't have the information. How am I going to come back to you and ask you for a property tax levy if that's what we need, not being able to look at what, what that budget looks like? And we need this workforce allocation study. You know, if we have two, and I don't even know that this is the number, but let's just say, there are 2,000 vacancies in the Chicago Police Department, and in our best year, we, we have, we've only ever hired 600 new police officers. What are we doing carrying 2,000 vacancies? Now, there's explanations for it. We never budget properly for overtime. I mean, so there's, there's a lot of just, I think, transparency that needs to happen. We need to get to more sort of real budgeting instead of creating these sort of like pockets of, of, of money where we can sort of fudge things here and there and have these cushions, and those cushions cost money at the end of the day. So if we're being responsible about it, we do need to look department by department. And that is actually one of the things that we were trying to fight for at the end of this. And then, you know, all of a sudden, there was this big left turn and they had just enough votes to get a budget passed. But one of the things that we were looking to get was really a, a commitment to asking the city and the budget, OBM, to take a look at what, you know, a 5, 10, and 15% cut across the, for, across the city would look like and what the impact would be. Because there's ripple effects to all of these things too. Trust me, we looked under every stone. We talked about furlough days. Well, you know, if you, if you're furloughing people, then you've got a reduction in service, and it might mean your garbage isn't getting picked up as frequently as it needs to. So, you know, everything that we do has, has a ripple effect, and, you know, that's the balancing act in all of this for us.
All right, so I'm going to sort through some of these questions we've been hitting up. Real quick, big picture wrap-up, one or two sentences each. We are two years into this administration and this council. We have two more budgets to go. Biggest challenge you're anticipating in those two years? And what can city council do to be prepared to meet them before the mayor's next budget address?
So I've only been in, in office for two years. And I will say that when I, when I came in, I'll tell you kind of how I ran for aldermen. I'd come home from military deployment just after COVID. I'm walking around my neighborhood, and I live like right by Gibson's Italia. And I'm walking around with my three-year-old daughter, and people are overtly using and dealing drugs right outside my home. And said, gee, that's something somebody ought to do something about. They put a new ward there, I ran for it, I got 70% of the vote. And then I get there in the city council, I have some finance and law background as, as, as I mentioned. It was like walking into the control room of a nuclear reactor, and every light is blinking red. You're like, wow, I've always known we had some troubles, but had no idea that they were this bad. And I don't lay them all at our current mayor's feet, by the way, they've been, been being built up over, over generations. So I, I will say this, if we do not focus on getting our fiscal house in order, it will overwhelm every other issue that we have. Public safety, public transit, economic growth, everything you can think of if we don't get our fiscal house in order. And that is something that is going to take a long time and a lot of work and a lot of patience and a lot of real forward-thinking to, to improve. Solve is a, is a whole different question, but to improve upon that.
Yeah.
I said one to two sentences, and you used a lot of semicolons.
Well, a lot of, a lot of semicolons, a lot of semicolons.
The challenge is Trump and a lack of coordination. It's bad enough as it is. Once the federal government starts gutting departments of sanctuary cities, which it is going to do, and if we don't get our house in order to talk to the state to figure out our partnerships, we're all going to suffer for it. I do think there's an opportunity to really have to dig and figure out where money gets appropriated when you don't have any to work with. But I think that's going to be the challenge.
Yeah. I'm, I'm going to take a slightly different approach. I agree with what everybody else said. I, I think that fundamentally, we do have a trust issue between the legislative and the, and the executive. And if people aren't willing to be a little vulnerable, I know I'm getting a little woo-woo here, but honestly, we have to be honest with each other, we have to be vulnerable and straightforward, and we have to be willing to have the tough conversations. And we can't be afraid to do that, and we can't be afraid to, to stand and, and really answer for that to our constituents.
I think it's really important to just note that whoever the mayor was, this would be an extremely difficult job during an extremely difficult time. Frankly, anybody who's mayor right now would probably not be re-elected based on the difficult decisions that need to be made to help get us through this difficult period, certainly what we've been through and what we'll continue to go through these next two years. But what we have right now, and it's been said, and I'm going to say it again, we have a real problem with trust. Constituents, the residents of the city, don't trust government. There's a trust level in City Hall. We need to collaborate more, we need to work together. No one's going to get everything they want, but we've got to work together, and we're not doing that now. And we need more talented people in leadership positions in City Hall.
All right, Brian. I think Brian's got questions from the audience, so I'm going to turn it over to him.
I think everybody in the audience has a question.
Yeah.
So I tried to, tried to stick to process, but there's a couple in here, so we'll see how we go about it. Here's, if we can try to keep our answers, we only have 20 minutes left. If we can try to keep our answers to.
One word.
Yeah. Well, let's do a practice one real quick. One word. How do you think the city council will vote on today's $830 million budget? That's a one word. Go ahead, Bill. How will you, how will you vote?
Yeah, I think, I think they all know how I'm going to vote.
Right.
Send it back to committee, which is kind of no.
Okay. 50/50 shot, it goes to committee or it gets voted out?
I have more questions than I have answers on that topic. And this is a very important vote. I think it needs to go back to committee.
I was like 17 words, but we'll give it to them.
Given resource constraints and city council's focus on city services, is it time to rethink about shifting to a city manager model and your thoughts on a city charter?
Short, right?
Depends on the contents, but yes. I'll say on the city charter thing, city, city manager, that's a huge Springfield lift, so that's a different, different thing.
More charter.
I think the charter is a worthy conversation to have.
Amid threats and anticipated cuts in the, in the federal government reaching Chicago, how is city council preparing to know the impact your ward in the city will have?
Ask you a lot of questions before we issue a billion dollars' worth of debt.
We've actually had some conversations with the, with the budget office on this specific topic, which I was very pleased with. I think that there's going to be a lot of legal battles involved in, you know, making sure that the commitments that were made already are fulfilled. And then I think the bigger question is really like, what's the pain going to look like when we, we lose a lot of the things we anticipate we're going to lose?
Good. Here's a good transparency and accountability question. The increase of the use of the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, has become a tool to avoid transparency and accountability by elected bodies. What are your opinions on this relative to taxes, fees, salaries, et cetera?
We have to at least acknowledge the fact that our liabilities in terms of salaries, pension, et cetera, are going to consistently increase as we go, as we go forward. As far as how much is a little bit dependent, but the CPI is as good an estimate as any as to how much that's going to be.
Yeah, I agree fully. We all know costs go up. You've got to pay for the services. So it's about how we have the conversation with the public and ourselves as like branches of government that is important.
I'll let you go with the next question. I don't have anything more to add to that.
We, we heard a little bit of this today with the mayor's office, but what is city council currently doing to identify and develop new revenue ideas?
Praying.
There's a new Google form, right?
Yeah, there's a Google form. It's challenging, right? So for example, hemp was something that had some potential, but the way the administration moved forward with it made it kind of, no pun intended, toxic to the point that people don't want to work on it. So trying to figure out different methods. We've also looked at congestion pricing, for example. But with the federal government now changing seats, right? That becomes challenging. So it, it's going to be about looking at what's possible and without Springfield, it's not a lot.
Yeah, I would say the same about hemp. It's certainly something that I'm still interested in, in working on. Video gaming is something that I don't think that we've dug into far enough. I think that we're, we're leaving literally a lot of money on the table. We see these sweepstakes machines that are popping up everywhere that kind of fall under a loophole. They are not arcade games that teenagers play. These are, you know, adult games that are paying out things with actual value and we're not getting anything for it besides the sticker for, you know, the license for having an electronic gaming terminal. It's not, it's not Street Fighter. It's a slant machine.
Well, I mean, I, I think talking about hemp and video gaming and congestion pricing are all, all three things that makes some sense. Beyond that, one, one fee that we do charge, and assuming you all live down here, it's not something that you probably pay, but it's the, the garbage collection fee is $9.50 a month if you get your garbage picked up from the city. If you live in a high-rise building, you're paying like $15 to $20 per unit. And it's a lot more efficient for people to come pick up 200 units at one time. So the fact that the city's charging $9.50, we are taking a serious loss on that. This was something that came up a bit, a bit in the, in the budget process and there's a lot of argument about it. I'm sure Matt's worried to be hit real hard on this, so it's, it's, but nonetheless, I think it's, that's a conversation we could have as well.
Yeah, two things that I really pushed for in these meetings were, again, I, I'm not a fan of it, but we're at the point now, folks, we've got to find revenue. Video gaming, which we need help from Springfield and a group of Aldermen going down there isn't going to get it done. It needs to be the leadership speaking with the leadership. We've already covered that. But as, as Bill just pointed out, the garbage fee. The closest municipality to us that is less than $15 is Naperville. Every single municipality within 40 miles of us is significantly more than the $9.50 we are. Do you know what it costs to actually pick up your garbage if you live in a single-family home in the city? It, it's about $35 a month. That, that's the cost to the city to pick up your garbage. You're charged $9.50. One of the things that I strongly pushed and got the stiff arm from the administration was to try to come up with incentive. Don't hold senior citizens harmless. Maybe if somebody does more recycling, the neighbor you got with five garbage cans in the alley, why do they have five garbage cans? We need to look at the garbage fee. We're at $9.50. No one's even close to it. Everybody is significantly higher. Then that would generate significant revenue.
And this is specifically asking in the context of not during budget time, but now. Are the alders going to divide up the departments and have committee meetings to explore efficiencies? Not just cost savings, but also work efficiencies within budgets, within departments?
Yes. I'm, I'm keeping them short for everybody, but part of, part of the process, doing the year-round process is to do that, to have the time to really break that down over a year and identify where efficiencies can be found because you can't do it in a couple of months. So I think my gut tells me it's going to be a multi-year process to actually figure all these things out, but the fact that we're starting now is a good sign because it hasn't happened before.
Let me unpack on that a tiny bit more if I can. What would that look like? I mean, we know what the department hearings look like during budget. We obviously have committees that oversee various aspects of the city that would include certain departments. You know, again, for people who've watched Chicago politics for a while, the idea of a committee chair on their own initiative, calling a department head in and forcing them to testify about a bunch of stuff, that would be really unprecedented, right? That's not a thing that we've seen happen a lot in the last 20-plus years of government. Is that something that we could see happening in relationships between the council and the administration because you have that lack of trust? Is there a world where we do have a council that is saying, I don't care if you want to or not, come give us answers in committee?
We're about to find out. So part of what was in the negotiation was doing mid-year hearings in September, right? That the chair of the budget committee agreed to. So we're going to find out if that actually manifests itself. But I think when you think about hearings as being kind of quantitative, qualitative conversations, how does someone manage a department as opposed to quantitative? What are the numbers? These are things that we're just going to continue asking over time because we could look at it and say, this costs way too much. Why are we doing it? It is a fair conversation to get, or a fair answer for a department to explain to us why it's important to do so because there are implications. And so I think continuing to dig along those lines makes sense. We have some of our colleagues, and I think it's a fair conversation to figure out how we do management when it comes to the city, right? If you work in a corporation, and I came from corporate before I got here, one manager has a fleet of people that they kind of manage over. You don't see the same in city government, right? It'd be a handful of people that they're managing and that could be viewed as inefficient and ineffective. I think we're going to have to keep to identify that.
Yeah, I think a deeper dive, absolutely. But I think that it starts with, we have to come to some sort of agreement on what is the minimum level of service that we want to be able to maintain. If we don't have agreement on that, I don't think you can get very much farther on finding efficiencies.
And I will say, it doesn't necessarily have to be a competitive, you know, we're not talking subpoenas necessarily. Alderman Vezkis, I know your immigration committee, you had departments testifying and like it was like a monthly or bimonthly or whatever. So there is, there is already sort of a model of commissioners and staff who are involved in a specific area come before the relevant committee and testify.
There's also extra governmental costs. So CTA is not part of city government, but there's costs associated with that that we're going to have to look at. CPS, not a part of city government, but our neighbors, they'll go, why did you cut CPS? It's not really part of government, but we are paying some of that pension debt payment. So for example, tomorrow, knock on wood, we're going to be voting on doing quarterly hearings of the CPS CEO, the same way we did with CTA president. Yeah, you've got to do these good government, better government things, pun intended, to make sure that we actually get the right answers. And so I think there's a lot of that that's going to have to continue.
Sorry, it's a bit, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine. What accounts for the explosive growth in the size of the budget over the last five years? They're saying up 60%.
Come on, guys.
Yeah, a lot of it, a lot of, so the good of it is if you, if you see that the budget has gone from, has gone up about $6 billion in the last, in the last six years or so. Little over a billion of that is, is increased pension payment. So that's a good thing. Beyond that, it is salary increases as well as, as well as infrastructure costs. COVID, yeah. Well, COVID is the reason that we got the money. Why we choose to spend it on operations is a whole other problem.
So I think, I think that was part of the challenge, right? Is when you look at COVID, there's a reason why we need to expand things. We all know there were neighbors who were getting neighbors groceries. There's a lot of protections that cost a lot of funds, but what we knew is that those funds were finite. And so that was the tension is when you're creating these larger solutions, identifying that, hey, the money's not always going to be there. And so what we're going to have to find out in the next number of years is do those things come back down? Because if not, you're creating the type of, kind of cost that you're not going to have the revenue to cover and sustain.
Well, and we continue to do that with this budget as well because we didn't claw back much more in terms of ARPA funding. One shelter system was one of the things, and I asked in particular a question about this, which was what, what ARPA money is being, what the money is being spent on? Is it hard assets, buildings, beds, cheats? No, it's people. So that's going to leave us with a big gaping hole in this next budget too.
My first budget was 2012. It was under $9 billion. My last budget, 2025, was over $17 billion. It's more than doubled in 14 years. Government's too big, folks.
Given, given growing national increase in participatory budgeting as a tool for increasing civic engagement and transparency, what are your thoughts on how Chicago might expand or formalize participatory budgeting across all wards?
So we knew menu budgeting, it's a really good question for a number of reasons, right? If you'd like to see a property tax increase, please raise your hand. This is why it becomes challenging to do participatory budgeting. It's, it's hard to do participatory zoning. Everyone wants these concepts and they understand, actually, I'm going to quote a colleague of, a former colleague of ours, Harry Osterman, who gave me a gem that will never leave me. Everyone wants to see progress. No one wants to see change. So trying to figure out what an engagement process looks like, when you know what the answer is going to be to the question becomes challenging because everyone knows how constrained they all feel. And they don't think about future generations and the things that we need to do responsibly. They think about how it feels right now, which is why you'll never see anybody say, yeah, we do need to pay for those things. It's very rare. So I, I don't know what engagement looks like, but it definitely has to start with a lot more education and awareness so people get why you actually have to pay for services and why taxes make sense. We just don't have, government's never been incentivized to provide that kind of information, which is why you need outside groups like yourselves and others to continue that kind of dialogue.
Yeah, I'd also say if it's, if that, if the context of that is participatory budgeting in terms of our menu money, the issue is that a lot of our wards are very all over the place. You know, I have, the needs of the loop are different than South Loop, are different than Greettown, are different from a lot of West Loop, different from a lot of Little Italy. And, and, you know, I think part of the reason I was elected is to try and balance all of those disparate needs in disparate places. And so it's hard for folks in like the middle of the loop to figure out, hey, is that need in Little Italy more important than, you know, this park in the West Loop or not? So as, as a result of that, I think I'm relied upon to make, to make the decisions there. And it's worth noting, I talked to you about all that disparate area I have. I have the smallest ward in the city. So if you look at that relative to my colleagues, you know, it's, it's many multiples of that when you're looking at Mount Greenwood versus Morgan Park, for example. So that's why I think in participatory budgeting is, is difficult to implement, even if it does promote engagement in some limited way.
How about we just get people to turn out to vote first?
Sure.
If we can get that to a particular threshold, I'd be willing to entertain a little bit more of a real conversation about participatory budgeting because what you end up with is a smaller and smaller segment of the population who's, who would be controlling a lot of the resources. We got elected for a reason. And I, I have participatory budgeting in, in my ward. We just started it last year. We learned a lot. We didn't do a whole lot. We learned a lot. We didn't spend a whole lot of money, but we're better prepared for it this year. And it is a way for, for us to get people who want to like elect to be involved in it to self-select and be a part of that conversation. But then they're making decisions on that pool of money. And it's not that everybody doesn't have the opportunity. Some people are happy with the person that they voted for or not voted for, whoever's in charge, making some of those decisions. But if we don't get at the basic level, people engaged at, at the level of who are you electing to make those decisions for you, then I'm having a conversation about participatory budgeting.
When we talk about participatory budget, I have 150 miles of lame road in the 19th war. Bill has less than 40. We both get $1,005,000 to fix all the stuff that goes wrong with those 150 miles.
A lot more people use mine though, before you take my money.
So, and, and I mentioned a few minutes ago, the budget went from less than $9 billion to $17 plus billion in 14 years. The budget for our menu went from 1.3 million to 1.5, and it's gone up $200,000 in 14 years. We're, we're paying a lot more to get a lot less. And if the folks in our respective boards don't like the job we're doing, they can vote us out. We should be working with our constituencies in our respective communities so that they have a voice for doing that. We're doing our job.
The only asterisk I want to add, $200,000 bucks is fixing half an alley. Literally half an alley. That's how little those funds actually mean.
I want to give our panelists a one minute to give a little closing argument. We're done with the question. We thank everyone here for those questions. Closing argument, closing thoughts on the budget process overall, and then Jeffrey will close.
Well, I already gave my little, our fiscal health is really bad speech, so I'll spare you that again. It's one thing I will say is that first of all, I want to thank the BGA for, you know, budget season's tough and they give us a lot of, they give us a lot of, they boil down a lot of information for us and it's very helpful in that. So, so Jeffrey and everyone at the BGA, I want to thank you for that. Also, I want to say, I am, as I, as I kind of mentioned, the Do Your Homework Caucus isn't that large or some of my colleagues are not that thoughtful. I, I will promise you to a person, every one of the other three people on this stage are very thoughtful people. We're blessed to have them in public service and, and it's, it's great that hopefully a lot of us can come together to find how we can, how we can make Chicago a safer and stronger place. And thank you again.
Yeah, thank you guys for this. I think I modified that a little bit. I think our colleagues are thoughtful about the work they do, but they interpret it differently. Some of them view their job as largely service providers. You call to get a treaty cut, right? They, they care about that. It's, it's a new concept that the council becomes more legislative in, in the way it acts. So I think, I think we're seeing that evolution. But what I would say with the last time here is that you all have homework to do, right? We look at how large crowds are for a lot of these conversations. I'm glad that you all are here. I would charge you all to find another person or another two or another couple to continue paying attention to what's happening at the budget hearings, to have these conversations as a community. Because that's what's ultimately going to move all of us. It's when the voters come to us and say, why are you doing that and asking those questions? All of us get emails from our constituents. At the bottom, some of them leave the address. I promise you, it's the first thing we look at. You can get emails from all across the city, but I want to know if they're in the ward first. So I think you all talking to your neighbors to get that level of engagement early, often and constant is what moves us to come to better budgets and a better government in general.
100% what everybody has already said, we, you have to hold us accountable. And we're accountable to all of you as taxpayers. And the more engagement that we get from you, the more it's going to push all of us to, to push the status quo at the, at the city council level. I think you've got, you're, you're seeing much more than just a spark. I mean, I, I've only been on the council now for three years and, you know, this, this is as engaged as I've seen this council. Matt can probably say more about that because he's been here the longest. But I, I think there's real momentum there and I'm, I'm ever hopeful because I'm just kind of that person, that we're going to be able to, to get more people to really think beyond the politics. And the politics gets in the, in the way of everything. I mean, I think that's just, that, that's part of the rub in, in what we do. You know, the, the difference between the right thing and the right political thing and what's going to keep you in office and what's not. I didn't get into this to stay in office and I'm not saying that I don't want to stay in office, for the record.